We now have a quorum.
Yep.
Called order and a roll call vote.
Rodney G.
Present.
Eric Larson.
Here.
Mary Loopke. Nicole Robinson.
Present.
Want to welcome everybody for joining us tonight. We have a good agenda. We've had a rather complicated executive session. We actually started at three thirty and hope it's okay to get done on time. It ran over ten minutes. Sorry, sorry for that. We have been starting our meeting by the chair reading the mission, vision of the college, and our key values, and I'd like to do that at this time. The mission of St. Louis Community College is empowering students, expanding minds, and changing lives. I think we're all committed to doing that day to day. The vision of the college is that St. Louis Community College will be a national leader and model institution for inclusive and transformative education that strengthens the communities we serve through the success of our students. That vision is very much what drives this board. We just had a lengthy discussion about goals and kind of where we're going, and that captures what we were talking about. Serving the students from throughout the community, especially those that may be a little hard to get into our building sometimes. So, we're very focused on raising enrollment and serving all the students in our community. Our values: Students First, Respect For All, Integrity, Collaboration, and Data-Informed Decision Making. Do we have any citizens wanting to address the board?
No.
Thank you very much. I'd like to adopt the agenda or any proposed revisions to the agenda from a board member.
So moved.
There's a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. I think we can do this by voice, voice vote, right? And to that point. All in favor of adopting the agenda as it was proposed? Say yes. Aye. Yes. Anyone opposed? The acceptance of minutes. Take a motion to accept our minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone want to raise an issue about the minutes? Something that is not quite stated right or whatever? Thank Jessica for doing a good job on that every meeting. Appreciate that. All in favor of accepting the minutes? Say aye. Executive session resolution. So.
We need someone to read it.
We need somebody to read it. Rodney, can you do that for us?
I recommend that the Board of Trustees meet an executive session on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolve that the Board of Trustees pursuant to Section six-ten-oh-twenty-one of the Missouri Statute hold a closed meeting, record and vote on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at four P. M. for the following reasons. One, to discuss legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving St. Louis Community College, and to hold any confidential or privileged communications with the attorney for the college. Section six-ten-oh-twenty-one, one, Missouri Statute. Two, to discuss the lease, purchase, or sale of real estate. Section six-ten-oh-twenty-one, section two. And three, to discuss action upon any personnel matters related to the hiring, firing, disciplining, or promotion of personnel. That's section ten, six and one, six-ten-oh-twenty-one, section three. And four, to discuss preparation, including discussions or work product on behalf of St. Louis Community College or its representatives for negotiations with employee groups. Section six-ten-oh-two-one, nine, and five, to discuss individual certificate, individually identified personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Section six-ten-oh-twenty-one, thirteen. And finally, section six, to discuss records which are protected from disclosure by law. Section six-ten-oh-twenty-one, fourteen. Further resolve that the notice of the closed meeting be given in accordance with Section six-ten-twenty. So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Nicole seconded. We need a roll call vote.
G.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Loopke.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
I might say that Dr. Graham was here for the closed session and is attending the funeral right now, and Kevin Martin attended the closed session by video, but he is traveling and I think is doing whatever he's doing.
Having fun.
I hope he's having fun. It was very, very good of him to break and spend a couple hours with us. Our next item of business is recognition of student and staff accomplishments.
Good evening, Chair Larson, Chancellor Pittman, trustees, faculty, staff, guests. Tonight, we are honoring a faculty member for his dedication to teaching community college students and two students who bonded and persevered through unthinkable tragedies to earn their associate's degrees. We're also honoring staff whose innovative solution to a district-wide issue encountered during the COVID-nineteen pandemic earned recognition from the League for Innovation in the Community College. Our first honoree is Erin Champagne, professor of philosophy at Merrimack. Erin has been selected to receive the two thousand and twenty-four Merrimack Faculty Lecture Award. This award is given to a full-time faculty member who has demonstrated excellence in instruction, enthusiasm for teaching in the community college, and evidence of concern for community college students. The winner will deliver a lecture that conveys the mission and role of the community college to an aspect of American society, national or local, at the general opening session for the spring semester in January of two thousand and twenty-four. Erin is committed to professional growth and to the discipline of philosophy. He communicates that knowledge in an engaging way. As a gifted teacher that shines in the classroom, he has made his students' success a personal priority, and he makes sure that they are involved in learning and that they're truly engaged. The techniques he uses are especially helpful for students with multiple learning styles. These efforts clearly illustrate that he goes above and beyond in terms of helping his students learn, so we would like to congratulate Erin and thank him for his commitment to our students' success.
Everyone, you come up.
If you'd like to come up, you can get a photo. Our next two honorees are Tekeisha Blue and Keisha Akers, who both received an Associate Degree in Culinary Arts just a few weeks ago. A few months ago, graduations seemed out of the question. Both women lost daughters in the fall. Tekeisha's daughter passed away after a long battle with cancer. Keisha's daughter was killed in the shooting at Central Visual and Performing Arts High School. The two met two years ago through Misha Clancy, St. Louis Community College's Coordinator for Student Retention Programs and the Black Male Achievement Program, designed to increase retention and matriculation of underrepresented students, both male and female. Commonality brought them together. Tragedy and triumph have bonded them. They have cried together, prayed together, encouraged and supported each other, found strength to keep pushing forward to finish their degrees. Keisha wants to get a food truck to bring healthy options to underserved areas in St. Louis. She also wants to become a family and consumer sciences teacher so that she can teach students how to prepare healthy meals. Tekeisha, equally ambitious, has run three community gardens for years and wants to help North St. Louis City by educating the community on ways to prepare meals beyond junk food and fast food. In keeping a promise to her daughter to not separate her children, Tekeisha and her husband are raising six grandchildren, and Tekeisha hopes to become ordained this fall. If you'd like a more detailed look at how this friendship became a lifeline for these two women, you can read their story there for each other under the news link on the STLCC website and written by Jason Young, who's also here tonight. Congratulations to Tekeisha and Keisha. We grieve your losses. We applaud what you both have achieved by navigating such challenging life changes. Our final honorees project earned STLCC's overall Innovation of the Year Award for two thousand and twenty-two and recent recognition from the League for Innovation in the Community College. The STLCC Vax Incentive App was launched in fall of two thousand and twenty-one by Information Technology's Enterprise Services Team, led by Kalud Wasli, Director of Enterprise Service and Operation. Other team members were Jeff Cap, Director of Applications Solutions, Suhal Awan, Application System Analyst Program Lead, Brian Bakula, Senior Oracle and Database Systems Analyst, Adam La Presto, Data Integration Lead, Matthew Schrum, Application System Analyst Programmer, and Jim Cooper, also Application System Analyst Programmer. STLCC's COVID-nineteen Response Team needed a way to encourage employees and students to get vaccinated against the virus while recognizing that a vaccine mandate would not be possible. A monetary vaccine incentive program was implemented, and Kalud's team developed the Vax Incentive App used through the existing STLCC mobile app that allowed participants to quickly, conveniently, and securely provide proof of vaccination. The team worked with finance, payroll, student affairs, and project management to quickly develop both the tool and the process for validation and payment. The result was significant: a sixty-seven percent increase in confirmed employee vaccinations compared to pre-incentive numbers and a two hundred and thirty-five percent increase in students. These employees were recognized for this project at the April two thousand and twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting, you may remember. However, the League for Innovation recently presented its Innovation of the Year Award badge in recognition of innovative practice at a league member institution. The electronic badge, which can be used by the staff on email, websites, social media, and the like, can act as a visual cue to spark conversation around innovation, create relationships, and build community. Once again, we'd like to congratulate Kalud and her team for this significant achievement. And that concludes tonight's presentation. Thank you, Chairman Larson.
Thank you very much. I might say that the college is a longtime member of the league and is in the process of joining their governance board, so it kind of adds one more layer of support. The League is all about innovation, so we're so proud of the work you all have done. Thank you. And you two, I don't even know what to say. I mean, we're all touched, but we're also all very hopeful for your futures. Thank you. We have an update on minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses program goals.
Good evening. As you may, we included information. You have the PowerPoint. There we go. Supplier Diversity Program has been around for a few years. It's gone through some problems. It's also gone, it's also achieved some better results than we might have expected during certain times. But the first thing I want to do is introduce our new supplier diversity manager. Her name is Anwen, and she's been in the position for roughly, well, since September, so nine months. And I wanted to introduce you. If you remember, we used to have Stephanie Smith was our last one. So, we want to tell you tonight about our progress, what we have done for utilization for the FY twenty-three period through March thirty-first, and then also talk about FY twenty-four, what we're going to do. First thing that we want to do is talk about what it is to be an MBE or a WBE. MBE is fifty-one percent owned and managed by persons belonging to a minority. That would include men and women. So, on the WBE, at least fifty-one percent owned by and managed by female, but since minority females would be in the MBE, this would represent non-minority, women in business. Our goals for this past year were to, and we broke it down between consulting and contracting, which comes under Hart, and then supplies and services, which comes under our purchasing function. We, you'll notice for MBE, we had a fifteen percent consulting contract goal for two thousand and twenty-three, twelve percent for WBE, and then when we get down into supplies and services, fourteen percent and five percent. Some of the reasons why you would see lower amounts for supplies and services is you have a lot smaller transactions that will result in, in trying to achieve a goal would be a higher goal, whereas in consulting and contracting, you have large contracts. So, for example, on the ninth of June, you approved the Parrick Corporation, and we, you included roughly an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in that to, in order to achieve a higher result for MWBE. You'll see it started approximately in two thousand and sixteen, and but I, and you can read that, but I want to go down to the twenty-three as what we've been doing. For twenty-three, we tried, we're conducting utilization reports, establishing connections with outside regional organizations to improve our best practices. An has been involved with the Heartland Black Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Anchor Network, St. Louis Council on Construction. And when we talk about these, they, for example, the construction, the last one that I listed may not be, it involves more than just diversity, but An is involved in the diversity side of what they're trying to accomplish. As you can see in supplies and services, it was a challenging year in FY twenty-three. We've actually gone down from twenty-two to eight-point-two-one for MBE and two-point-three percent for WBE. We attribute the most of this to supply chain problems. And the supply chain problems, by that we mean that as, when you talk about MBE and WBE, they, they may not be as large of entities, and so they may not have been able to get the products that we need timely. And if you think about Amazon, you know, or Walmart, they can suck the air out of the room on achieving and getting, getting product, and the MBE and WBEs may not be able to achieve that. But we're, we'll talk about that because we're, we're not satisfied with that result. In consulting and contracting, you'll see that we exceeded the expectations for our two thousand and twenty-three goals of fourteen-point-nine percent in, nine-seven percent in MBE and sixteen-point-seven-seven percent in WBE. As transformed gets moving and we start to spend more and more money, the dollars become bigger, so we anticipate that this trend will probably stay the same for the rest of twenty-three, obviously, and then for twenty-four, that we would see that also. If, the next slide shows the actual percentages, and you'll see that WBE for supplies and services was only three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of a total spend of roughly fifteen million dollars. MBE was approximately one-point-three million dollars. The, these numbers do exclude sole source, intellectual property type things, so illusion would not be included in the denominators. We, we eliminate things in the denominator that we don't have control over. So, if you have intellectual property or sole source or utilities, PSRS, those types of things that we have no control over. So, these in theory are, the total dollars of fifteen million dollars is the controllable expenses. It's not working. Can you? Okay. There we go. Consulting and contracting, these match up with what you've seen on the other slide, but you'll see that it's roughly fifteen percent for MBE and seventeen percent. But the total, you know, non-MWBE is, is roughly thirteen-point-six million dollars. We, during the year, we have, and you'll see this next month when we talk about the, some of the costs in transformed, we're, we've spent approximately twelve-and-a-half, thirteen million dollars on transformed through today. So, you will see that a lot of those dollars that are from transformed would go into these categories, especially since we're using people like KAI or Tarleton that would fit into these categories. So, you say, well, what are the goals for twenty-four? And we've left them alone, and we believe that we can achieve a higher result in supplies and services than we did this last year, and, and so we want to keep the dollar amount, I mean, the percentage amounts, the same for next year. And some of the ways we're going to achieve that are in the next slide. We're, we're actively recruiting MBE and WBE, and by that, we're, An is going out and identifying those vendors that might fall in those categories. In particular, we made a change that An is on all RFPs. So, by having An on all RFPs, that means that An can look at it and say, oh, I've identified this vendor, and she can direct that RFP to an MWBE vendor. Those types, and then we're talking about implementing a supplier sourcing portal for internal procurement usage, organizing local small businesses, marketplace, strengthen our collaborations with the organizations we do have, and then develop a supplier diversity webpage. The big challenge for us ends up being in the small purchases, because as you might guess, you, a lot of the purchases, people want to use Amazon. Why? Because Amazon delivers. And so, we're trying, we're trying to develop systems around that to make sure that people do think of it. We've encouraging people, we're going to talk about changing P-cards, as you all know, so we have those issues that we have to deal with, and we're trying to accomplish a better result. We're taking this, this is serious to us. It's your, you, you want this to occur, and so we want it to occur also. So, we're trying to increase our footprint, but with supply chain for twenty-three, it didn't happen, but the supply chain is freeing up, and so we think we can actually create some of the things that we need to do to achieve our results. So, for two thousand and twenty-four, we're talking about keeping our goals the same for, as we have had for two thousand and twenty-three. More glad, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from board members? I think we're being asked in the next agenda item to support by a vote the retaining of these two goals for the upcoming year.
Correct.
I'll take a motion to recommend approval of the FY twenty-four Minority-Owned Business and Woman-owned Business program goals as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Our next item of business is operating in capital budget. You're back.
You have the budget was presented at a last meeting and have the opportunity.
Very well presented, I might say.
Appreciate Sheri did, did the yeoman's work on that. But we're here to answer any questions that you might have, since you had approximately a month to look at it.
Any board member want to bring up an issue within the proposed budget? We've actually had multiple looks at this over the year, and it's kind of evolved, and we did have a nice presentation last board meeting. So, I assume what you would like for us to do is vote on it.
I would like to motion to, to vote on it and approve it.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommended budget for FY two thousand and twenty-four?
So moved.
Go, go. Second.
We're a small but mighty group tonight. We have a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? No one's opposed.
Appreciate it.
Doctor Pittman, are you going to be presenting the strategic plan?
Yes. As with the budget, we presented the board the strategic plan last month for your review and consideration. Staff have been working on this. It was approximately about a year ago that we had a two-day retreat of the cabinet and our leadership team, and we have strived to make this available for some time to all the employees of the college for input. So, we're ready for a vote if the board is ready to vote.
I'll take a motion to support this, and I think we do have a question. So, a motion to support, to approve the strategic plan and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And are there questions? I think there is.
I just, just had a question, Chancellor. It's in regards to the section for... It's actually for KPIs, for DEI, and some of the questions that I had, like on the first, in the first section, it kind of doesn't spell out. It mentions the library. I'm just wondering, are the KPIs similar to some of the, the goals or plans that are set? I know these are measurements, but my question is, they're not detailed in the first portion, so I just have a quick question.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Robinson. Good question. Yes, they are, what, what activities we will have in, in the strategic plan, which is a very high level, it's a very high-level plan, will align with many of the KPIs. You know, some of these, if you look at persistence rate, course success rates, you know, those are very, those are tied to initiative one of improving the student experience, and we, we have a number of initiatives that we've been working on and will continue to work on with that. Yeah, here we go. Just kind of going down through here. The Student Climate Survey would also be relevant to using data to inform decisions on how we can improve our services to students. And if you, you know, I'm just kind of going through and picking some of these out. The diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, that's part of the best place to work as you go down and scroll through. And let's see, what else we got here? We're back to more persistence rates. Procurement of goods and services from MBE, WBE, very much tied to what Mark just presented that there are some things outside the scope of the strategic plan that's presented that we're doing anyway. You know, the strategic plan, we try to keep it at a high level and focus the really big items that we want to improve on. You know, the first being, you know, improving the student experience, which to me equates to enrollment and completion, I think to the rest of staff as well. The second is for us to improve operational efficiencies, that we really need to focus on some specific things, and we, we've got a lot of input from the employees on that. I think in a lot of ways, the employees are directing us what we need to improve on, and that's also tied to best place to work, that we have an environment where employees can easily navigate the bureaucracy that we have in place for things like procurement, purchasing. the bureaucracy that we have in place for things like procurement, purchasing, search seeing, paying bills, IT systems work when they're supposed to, you know, those kinds of things. If that if that helps answer some of your questions.
Yeah, I was just wanted to make sure that was kind of on, you can ask some questions, yes.
I don't know if we've discussed this, but one thing that often is is created is some kind of dashboard. Pardon me. To monitor progress on this.
Yes. Yeah, we, and we have our dashboards we can share with the board.
Pardon me.
Sure thing. Yeah, Hart, you might go in a little more detail about that.
So on the dashboard topic, we do have what's called a strategic action council. It used to be the strategic planning. We decided that we have a strategic plan, we don't need to continue planning throughout the next three years. So really what the intent of that is, is to meet quarterly, we maybe, actually, we moved that up, we're now meeting every two months, and to focus on one of these specific themes. But to your point is to take a look at what are the actual KPIs that we're meeting, where are we in our goals? And to be able to have that dashboard, what we used to do is basically hit all of the themes, we had more than three. At the same time, it became very much a book report, it was not particularly useful and interactive. But those are also open to trustees, trustees are welcome to attend those meetings, and that's where those dashboards are provided. What we will do, and so this is normally run by our program management office, so Anthony Denning, who just came on board Monday, will be running these going forward and taking over for David Haas. And so we'll make sure that we share those dashboards with you in those presentations.
And again, we'd like to welcome in the trustees to our strategic planning council meetings. I know a couple of you have been in the past and participated in those meetings. And Jessica, why don't we let them know when the dates are for those?
I think that'd be a good idea for us to have a sense of how all that's working. So again, we don't want to go in force, since that becomes a board meeting, but people can go. Can go as they have time, so thank you for letting us know when those meetings will occur. Anything else? Do you need that approved?
We need that approved.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six strategic plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We have.
Thank you.
Salary schedule discussion or presentation?
Tony, anything you'd like to add? Any context to what's been presented?
So this is the updated salary schedule for the next fiscal year. There were some slight movements on grades, but otherwise, it's fairly straightforward. For example, the steps from classified are straight out of the negotiated contract, but it's our overall schedule that we would follow for the year.
Any board member have question around the salary schedule? We need to approve that.
Yes.
Motion.
A motion to approve the salary schedule as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Mary and Rodney, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We need to authorize the chancellor to approve contracts and bid awards as we won't have a normal meeting in July. We do do have a meeting, a workshop planned, but not a normal meeting. So I'll take a motion to approve, have the chancellor approve contracts and bid awards.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We have a very exciting presentation at this point, the joint resolution between St. Louis Community College and National Education Association. During executive session, the board was briefed on this by our side of the negotiating team, and we are excited to accept this and take a motion on it. Is, do you want to have any presentation on that in the public session?
I don't believe we need one, other than I just want to thank the bargaining teams, the the NEA bargaining team, the great job that they did, you know, the collegial and professional manner which they conducted themselves through the process was much improved over past years, so really appreciate their efforts. Also want to thank and compliment the bargaining team for the college side. I know this is a lot of extra work for you and a lot of long hours, especially the last meeting. I know went to, I forget what time in the morning you finally got out of there. But just appreciated by his work and where we are right now.
I think the board is really excited about the the fact that our updates, and we've only heard from our side, but is that it was a very collaborative collegial process. And, you know, that that's what we would want, I think what probably everybody would want. People brought issues, they had honest discussion, not not either side got everything they wanted. That's what compromise is all about. And in the end, we came to a an agreement that we understand that teachers have accepted or the professional group has accepted unanimously, which is wonderful, literally wonderful. So we're very excited to have this presented to us. And I think at this time, I'd take a motion from the board to approve the joint resolution between St. Louis Community College and the National Education Association.
Motion, so moved.
Mary?
Second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm excited. Anyone opposed? The next item of business is a discussion of the NCERP agreement. We actually discussed that in closed session, but we need to vote on it here. Is there any presentation, or do you just want a motion?
Just for look for a motion and approval.
I'll take a motion to approve that agreement amendment.
I move to approve the insert agreement amendment as presented in the executive committee.
Second that?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Our next item is the consent agenda, which is where we approve a whole set of things that are presented to us in writing. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, then we'll see if anyone wants to pull any item or discuss anything in specific, but we need a motion first.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The consent agenda is removed and seconded. Does anyone want to discuss a specific item within that list or raise a question?
There is, within the consent agenda and the academic affairs, there is a district curriculum committee that has brought forth course requirements for cannabis. Can you speak to that a little bit more, Dr. Pittman?
Well, I think as the trustees know, cannabis is a new product that's been approved by the people of the state of Missouri. It's it's kind of been moving in slowly. Initially, it was it was approved across Missouri right now. We have had a lot of interest by the the citizens of the St. Louis region to offer a certificate of this nature. So the faculty in the horticulture program, which is where this certificate would reside, have have developed this and put this together. We've even had local firms and manufacturers who's manufacturers who sell this product, retailers who sell this product donate equipment to the horticulture program that helps them understand the process and how that work is done. So that, this is a a new program. And Andrew, I don't know, do we have a waiting list to get into this program like we do everything else in horticulture? Or or at least for the classes that we're offering?
No waiting list, but it is popular. We have had some courses on the books, so this packages them into a certificate. And so it's not a cohort-based program, doesn't have a waiting list, but it has, it's an area of growth in the college and an interest in the community.
I ask the question because I've I've had two discussions with two doctors who have done research on the use of cannabis and how it impacts the development of the brain for youth and what they have seen in terms of the violence that has occurred with individuals who've used cannabis and then gone out and done some horrible act with either a gun or what I would call either self self-harm. So I'm I'm I just want to be aware of, have we considered that before we, as a college, say, yeah, let's start educating folks on it? Because there's other data out there that says there's harm to the community. So I'd rather pull it until we get some additional information, if that's okay.
What what would that do?
Well, the many of these courses are already in the curriculum in terms of taking them individually. This packages them together into certificates, so a student would have a credential. So the content is largely out there for students to enroll in it, so.
But we don't have a student, we don't have a waiting list, is what you're saying right now.
Don't have a waiting list, no. Not, and, I mean, the program we put in place because of some of what Dr. Pittman said in terms of workforce, you know, the employers needing folks who know how to do this, and we have an exceptional horticulture program, so this is about growing it and how to grow things properly, just like the other things that they teach students how to grow. There's a variety of uses for cannabis, I know that you're speaking about one of them, so.
Yeah, but if you, if we decide to postpone moving forward the certificate, we can do that and just gather additional information to bring back to the board about the potential issues that there's concern with.
I I think we need to, as a board, understand it a little bit more broadly, other than people are are interested. There's some risk, I believe, with furthering it in the community. I could see us having liability with this issue.
I weighed in in informal discussion that, you know, it's it it exists because of the vote of the people, it's legal. It isn't for youth, and I do think the use of cannabis by youth is is pretty clearly understood to be a problem. So I'm not necessarily backing you, but I am saying I'm fine with holding on so we can get more information. But I just state my opinion that seems like the this issue is sort of settled in Missouri and in many more states, and it's probably not going to turn around. And we're helping employers, you know, hire quality people and and get people that can make a good living. That's that's the essence of it. That being said, I'm glad to ask the board to postpone this, pull it from the consent agenda. We can reconsider at our next meeting or when the chancellor wants to bring it forward.
Is there any opportunity within this? Somehow working with cannabis in many ways to link this with our medical programs so that there's benefits medicinally from this, or is this just the growing of?
This is in the in the horticulture area, so it's just about, you know, growing, cultivating it, that kind of thing. And, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to try to bring back what information would be helpful for the board to consider it. From a from an academic perspective, you know, these are legitimate courses and legitimate community need for something that's legal in the state. And we have a competitive advantage because we have an excellent horticulture program. And, you know, if we don't step up to fill the need, then one of our, one of our, you know, friends in the area will. There's going to be demand for these workers, so it's just something to consider. So if I can, happy to bring back further information at a future.
Yeah, I think we could bring it back, it would be the August meeting now.
Sure.
We have something ready by August?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Word okay with pulling that and reconsidering it in August? Do we need a vote to do that?
We do, so we need, first, we need a vote to amend the consent agenda, so to pull that item.
So you want to make that motion, right?
Yes, I move that we amend the consent agenda by pulling the certificate program on cannabis and hemp production.
A second?
Second.
A second from Nicole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Now, I think we're back to the motion on the consent agenda as amended. Is there, well, we already got a motion on that. Do we need a second motion since it's as amended?
Motion as amended.
Yeah, for clarity, yeah.
So I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and second.
Mary and Nicole, very good. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Great. I think that raises, that brings us to any possible item that came out of the discussion. I don't think we have such an item, correct?
So you did pull that item, so you can vote on it, or you can take no action on it?
We're not going to vote on that tonight, that's the idea of pulling it, so we'll look at it in August. So I don't, I don't think there's anything else. So we are ready to go to communications, we have the chancellor's report.
All right, very good, and, yeah, we'll wait for my PowerPoint to come up here. But as we get ready for that, we've been working very diligently at the best place to work, which is now an official strategic plan initiative. It was one of my goals this past year, and I'm happy to say we've made a lot of progress.
Thank you.
Made a lot of progress with that goal, and what I thought I'd do today is update you where we are. We recently held several engage and listen sessions for the employees. We invited all employees to participate. Jennifer Arvin and Tanya, and I believe Deandre, were all involved in planning for that and have done a great job with that. We also had a retreat, our leadership team retreat at Flow Valley on Tuesday, where we built that out even further. So I'll wait here, do you have a PowerPoint? Okay. Are you ready? Okay, there we go, thank you. Jumped ahead a little bit. Again, you know, we're we're focusing on best place to work and provide an update on our engage and listen sessions. And just some of the the findings and debrief that we had. I believe, Jennifer, we had around a hundred eighty employees who initially said that they would like to participate. We had over a hundred fifty that actually showed up for the sessions. And we categorized them, and we have data on feedback from administrators, managers, staff, and faculty. And as I mentioned, just this past Tuesday, we we had a follow-up and and are making plans to move forward with what we have discovered through those sessions. So there were a lot of positive themes. I think the the most common themes of why people like to work at St. Louis Community College, they really like our mission and our vision and our core values, and many of the things that we focused on here tonight. They certainly love our students and want to serve them to the best of their capacity. They also like working with all of their coworkers here at the college, and they they really enjoy the people here. Some of the the district-wide themes that we saw, this was for all employees, trust and respect was a theme that they believe that we can improve on when we work with our respective employee groups across the college. There's always interest in more engagement. And when you look at the survey, we had a relatively low score with engagement, so we think there's some improvement there with engagement and decision-making. Third is, not, I've already mentioned this tonight, but operations and process improvement and communications and execution for those things here at the college. And then finally, recognition and appreciation. Those are really the four big buckets that we heard. We have more information, if you'd like to see it, by category of employees. For the sake of time, I I kind of kept this at the higher level. We we thought initially we wanted to move forward with some quick wins, things that we can get started on right away that are sustainable, visible, and measurable, and things that we can communicate immediately back to all the employees to let them know that we've heard them and we're working on responding them. So we have three that we're jumping in and moving forward with and had some planning on around Tuesday, and they are executive visibility, so that's, you know, myself and the campus presidents and the the vice chancellors and all the other leaders in the college that participate at the district level as well as the campus level. Operations and process improvement, we continue to work on that, so we put that in. And then moving forward to a more, what I consider a more comprehensive rewards and recognition program for our students. And also HR is rapidly deploying professional development for people leaders within the college. So when that, this kind of gets into some of the work that we did, we we let. the people in the leadership team choose two sessions of those three, and we had facilitators for those. So Bill Rec was for the executive visibility, Vicki Kettnecker was for process improvement, and then Katie Brindley was the facilitator for reward and recognition. So I kind of bounced around between all of those during the two different sessions. We got a lot of great ideas and feedback. We had goals for each group. So for executive visibility, you know, a logical goal is to increase visibility of leadership through event participation, and then also attendance at departmental and divisional meetings across the college. And they had some, we had some sub-goals that the group worked on. Operations and process improvement, we want to host in-person forums to discuss processes and procedures and share current and upcoming projects related to the strategic plan. So again, I think that's a well-placed strategic plan initiative, and we have some very strong ideas in terms of what to improve on and are already working on those. Then officially come back, because during the pandemic, we stalled out on service award recognition. And as with all things in the college, we have about five different versions of how we do that, by campus or at the district office. And I think there was a lot of debate and discussion around campus-level recognition activity versus district-wide recognition activities. And they've got, I think they've got started on some planning around that and setting aside a budget for that going forward. You know, I, I like the idea, I was listening in some, I think there's a lot of things we can probably do at the district level that would make these maybe a little more grandiose, for lack of a better term, for the employees, rather than trying to divvy them up by campus and having different ways to do that. So I, I'm really excited about this one and getting started and wrapping that back up right now. So the next steps, we want to take the ideas that were presented at the leadership team meeting and develop a final draft for approval by the chancellor's cabinet. We want to update all the groups, including, we have a, a best place to work. Deandre, I'm kind of, you popped, I could see your face, but we have a group that provided advice of employees that included faculty and staff. We want to get back with that group right away. In our newsletter, Jennifer, in my monthly newsletter, I believe, the first of the month, we'll have information out, out to all the employees that the things we're working on. And then, like anything else, execution, implement those initiatives in the coming year. So that's really the first round that will be tied to that. Obviously, the best place to work, work will continue based on what was just approved in our strategic plan, and certainly be open to any questions or comments or other ideas for us as we move forward.
I look forward to seeing that roll out.
Thanks, as do we.
It's exciting. It's very exciting.
Yeah. Good. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board chairs report. I'll keep this really short. First, just a reminder to the board members, but an announcement to anyone else, that we will have a board workshop on Wednesday, July 26th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. I'm assuming it'll be right here. And the purpose of that workshop will be to have a presentation and dialogue around how we will finance the various projects involved in STLCC transformed, essentially the building and, and construction project. We're in a, what I would call a very fortunate position to, you know, think differently about how to finance those than just go out and sell bonds, but we will be selling bonds at some point. And it's very important, in my mind, for the board to understand the process, and maybe even weigh in and make suggestions as to different ways we can go about it. In addition to our own staff, we are using an outside consulting firm to help us think this through. So it's not that we're operating in any way in a vacuum, but it's very important, I think, that we understand it. For obvious reasons, we're going to approve the spending of tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars over time. We can't do that without really knowing clearly why we're doing it the way we're doing it. I also think we have an obligation as board to the citizens who voted to support the Prop R, which has become STLCC transformed, and know that we are doing just what the language in the ballot measure called for. I think we're very careful in writing that and have been very careful in what we're approving. So this is an important workshop. It will be streamed, so we'll have some board members for sure who will be participating virtually, it's in the middle of the summer, and be available to the public as well. So wanted to make that clear announcement that we'll enjoy that discussion. Mark, thank you very much for putting that together. And then I want to say that, really, the only other comment I want to make tonight is, you know, that STLCC transformed has been really focused on pathways, new programs, construction. But I can't help but make the connection to the negotiations with the NEA, that we, we want to be a best workplace. We want to transform relationships. And what I, I wasn't at all a participant, but what I've heard is that this round of negotiations with the NEA was indeed quite different than what I've experienced in my 13 years on the board. And I don't mean to be, and I'm just going to call this out, I don't mean to be in any way paternalistic about saying that. I want us to genuinely get along with all of our employee groups and, and set up the best possible environment we can. And this seems like a really big step forward, and I'm excited about it. In that context, I have asked Dr. Pittman if he would think about some way for the board and the NEA leadership to get together and celebrate this joint agreement that will, you know, go four years into the future, really help set the tone, I think, with faculty for a long period of time. And that's, that's a momentous event. And I don't really know what's the right thing to do, but I would ask you to ask them, how would they like to meet with the board and spend time together in just a celebratory manner and, and start this joint agreement in the right direction?
Be glad to do so.
Great. Any citizens wanting to address the board?
No.
Nope. Board member comments? Anyone else on the board? Put that in an invitational term. Board members, would you like to make a comment? I'll start with Mary.
I just want to thank you all. I want to thank you all. I want to let you know you're appreciated. This has been a fairly, not fairly, this has been a very joyous growth period. And growth periods bring, you know, growing pains as we figure it all out. But I've been with this college for decades, four, and it seems to me that as we celebrate our 60th anniversary, we are celebrating it in a way that serves the past and honors the future.
I can just echo that, being the newest member, and everyone's just being so accommodating and sharing information and helping me walk through. So thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Well, I, I would add on top of that. I was at the, with, with Mary and Craig last week, and Jeff, we were at the MCCA conference. And when I talked to my peers from across the state at other community colleges, I just smiled because of the work that we have achieved as a team, both our faculty and all of our staff and the trustees. It's been hard. We know that. Change is, is very difficult and hard. But when you talk to the other community college trustees and some presidents, they have not made the progress that we have made here. So we can look back on the past four or five years and say, yeah, it was hard, but we're doing the right things for our students and for the community. And when the community says to you, look, we're going to give you this additional money to go out and transform the community college, they know it, they're doing it because they believe in the work that we do. So I want to thank each and every one of you for all of your hard work, and all the staff and faculty for all of their hard work. I also would be remiss if I did not recognize a dear friend, and that's Joanne Digman on the loss of her husband. We, we heard loss earlier in our meeting today from Mrs. Blue and Mrs. Akers. And I just want to reach out and say to you, we love you. You've been in my prayers, and we appreciate everything you've done for the college, and anything that we can do to help you during this time, let me know. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that, Rodney. I know it's on all of our hearts. If there are no other comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one gets to oppose that. Thank you to everybody for attending.